I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We hear from which we evangelize this sentence.
Okay, move that we approve vouchers that we paid this last month. Our accounts payable vouchers are in the amount of one million, five hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars and nineteen cents. We had two payrolls. They totaled five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-seven cents. We had a few voids in there, but we have a total expenditure for the month of two million, seventy-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and one cent. Along with that, I move we approve the minutes of our last meeting.
Second.
It has been moved by Kevin, or excuse me, moved by Steve, second by Kevin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh. We are going to let the PTO give a presentation, if you'd like.
Yeah. So we just have a free paper copy and I'll explain to everybody who we are. I'm only two. So for those who don't know us, my name is Carla Crooks and this is Lily Chapman. We are on the PTO board for the Triton Elementary School in the capacity of president and vice president. We have been working really hard the last few years.
There's two pages.
We've put together a big enough fund to be able to do something good for the school. And there was all disagreements after what we were going to do.
Everybody got two pages?
A lot of ideas as well, yeah, a lot of ideas. What we've settled on after.
Hang on a second.
You guys ready? There's two pages.
We're good.
Perfect.
You got the stage.
We got it.
Take it away.
One of the ideas that came up multiple times over the last few years was an outdoor classroom space that the teachers really felt that they could utilize, and they wanted it. So this year, we put a motion forward through at the PTO. We've approved that motion here, so now we're just letting you know kind of what our plans are and make sure that the school board also feels that it would be a good use of space and something that's beneficial for the students and the staff to use. In a survey with the teachers, seventy-five percent of teachers indicated that they would use that space. Their preferred location, fifty percent said they wanted the courtyard. Thirty-three percent said the north side of the school, so if you went to the elementary school, sometimes they do. I remember going there for popsicles in first grade, I think, with our kids. Sixteen percent said the corner of the playground. And then eighty-three percent of teachers indicated that they would also like us to include a whiteboard design or a whiteboard in the design for the space. Intended uses, they want to go out and enjoy the weather while teaching, science activities, do experiments, planting projects, maybe we have a small garden for them. They could start something from seed and watch it come to fruition themselves. They also want to use it as a reward and incentive for students, so if we have something going on in the school, they could say, hey, maybe we can win a day outside with the outdoor classroom space. If budgets allow, we would also love to put in some agglues so that we can use that space in the winter as well. So that's what we have put together for that. We have all of the funding already for that, so we don't need that. We are going to look for some sponsorship. Hollywood's one that's been mentioned. We might be able to get tables from, NIPSCO apparently does like the big round electrical schools. We might be able to get those to use for maybe stand-up table spaces. Anything else?
I think we've covered it.
And then our second intended project, which, this is our big one, our primary focus is the outdoor classroom space. Then we were also going to do.
Yeah, but were there any questions around the outdoor space?
We're not looking for anything most other than approval.
That's it.
I think it's more of like, yeah, notification, just letting, to keeping everyone aligned on what's happening, what we're doing over here.
And I think a lot of people just have no idea even what the PTO does. And primarily what we do is put on fundraisers and events that benefit the students and the staff throughout the school. We really want to make sure that the teachers are looked after because they're the ones that have to go in the classroom every single day with their kiddos and teach them, and we want them to have everything that we can possibly help provide them that they don't have.
And with that, we are all, we have also been doing some spotlighting of the teachers and staff, which has been, has gone really well. You know, the stories behind it, right, is so impactful, the, what they're, they're doing for our students, our children, and so we really appreciate that and we love hearing the stories and the impact that they're making. So, and to add to that, we. Alright, so with the outdoor classroom, or, I'm sorry, not that, we just talked about that. Yeah, the teacher lounge refresh. So the goal is really to provide a more welcoming, comfortable, and functional space for the staff and teachers. Some updates we were thinking about, and we had gathered some initial feedback from the teachers and staff. Furniture upgrades, a nice lounge area, a more aesthetically pleasing and upgrade. Improve usability. And our PTO board had motioned and approved to move forward, and the planning has been underway. We will also be reaching out to, or seek out some donations, and we're looking at, you know, grant opportunities as well through like LIP programs with Lowe's and other places to help support that. But we have intentions to utilize or start the process in June when there will still be, we have access to the building, but then it's kind of gives the team.
School won't be in session full-time, so other than summer schools, we'd still have access. And that way it wouldn't be super disruptive going in and making any improvements. I also work in real estate, so I, if I were listing that lounge, you know, I would list it as, you know, great investment opportunity, you know, refresh, make it your own, so this is what we want to do for them.
Are you going to do a cool video for us like you did for your housing?
I will.
You will? We want to do a before and after and kind of some insight from.
It's going to be like HDTV bourbon.
There you go. Don't make it too comfortable. We've still got to teach. Still got to teach.
Yeah. We already talked about like, you know, pebble ice machine, that was a highlight. Maybe potentially new refrigerators, yeah, great seating area, books, just a bit more welcoming space.
Awesome.
And then on the next page, we just highlighted some of the other things that we do throughout the year. We do two RIF days a year. RIF is reading is fundamental. On those days, we give every child a free book, so all the classrooms come down. Every child gets to pick a book out and take that home with them. We are running currently the Penguin Patch. We open from five to seven PM with public, if you want to spend money, help support the school. You can buy a little gift to give to your loved ones from us. And then the last thing we just did was our Dutch Colonel popcorn fundraiser. That's always a big one for us. And that one, we actually just did over fifteen thousand dollars in sales in popcorn. And we were able to gross just over six thousand dollars for the PTO to put towards these projects, which is how we've got the funding to do the things that we want to do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For making the PTO legit and working with our teachers. I love the fact that you took the survey of them, right? And said, what do you guys need? That means a lot to them, and then obviously the commitment you guys have made to carry that through. I really appreciate it. So, thank you very much. Any questions?
I appreciate the reason, spotlight some fish.
Yeah, they're nice.
Along all-way heroes.
Yeah.
I wondered if they were new or if I just saw a scene.
They mean to have to participate. One asked.
Sure, sure. It's my pleasure, right? Awesome. Thank you guys so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Can we move on to personnel?
Alright.
I just want to thank all the kiddos for being here tonight.
Oh, wait, sorry, patrons comment. I forgot about patrons comments. There's a lot of patrons tonight. Does anybody have a comment? You get a second chance later in the day.
There are still three more seats over here.
There are three more seats over here.
It's okay to move over there.
Extra points, maybe some ice cream later. I don't know.
A lot of standing up people.
A lot of standing up. Y'all, all good? No comments?
Text for credit if you had to make a comment or ask a question.
We always say that, whenever it takes us up.
We think there will be, anyway.
We'll put a good word in for you.
Alright. Ready to go. Alright, extracurricular activities, personnel agenda. I'd like to recommend the approval of the resignation of Derek Evelyn as the varsity volleyball coach. I do want to thank him for his years of commitment and obviously going out on a really high note. Our young ladies went to obviously semi-state, so. Thank you. Thank him for that, but I recommend the approval of his resignation.
Second.
Moved by Kevin, second by Wes. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Alright, I recommend the approval of Mr. Cook, Mr. Barker, Malachi Green as boys wrestling volunteer coaches.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, second by Austin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
The next two items, I recommend the approval of Grace Tubb as a substitute teacher and Logan Lynn extending from part-time to full-time staff member in our custodian, custodial area.
A move that we. Hire them accordingly.
Second.
The move by Wes, second by Steve. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Alright, next, I recommend the approval of Mrs. Arvison as the junior senior high school assistant to the principal. I do want to thank Mr. McCann. He'll have maybe an opportunity later to just share kind of the, some of the details. Obviously, he shared that with you guys through email. Legit process, over forty candidates, as always. Some of those candidates don't fully submit the application and/or are not qualified for that. But Mrs. Arvison had the opportunity to, I call it a dress rehearsal, I don't know if that's the right way to say it, but kind of show us what she was all about and take ownership of that, and she took full advantage of that. So I'm very, very proud of you. I think you're going to be awesome. You have been awesome, and I recommend the approval of her for assistant to the principal.
Second.
The move by Kevin, seconded by Austin. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, Sarah, for applying. Appreciate it.
Alright, we move on to other business.
Alright, next up, I recommend the approval of the C-VET and the FIT funds for the 2026 and beyond to be transferred to the operation fund, the and beyond. I'm not sure, Tom, if we're thinking that we wouldn't have to approve that again. I'm assuming we would come back to that, but just that we would be able to move that to operations.
Yeah, previously, the first vehicle excise tax and the financial institution tax were part of the budget under miscellaneous revenues, and they were allocated based on percentage of taxes to the debt service and the operations fund. The state came in and initially said you could deposit those monies wherever you wanted to. Since then, they've revised that and said schools have to deposit them in the operations fund. So, starting in 2026, that's where they'll be deposited.
Do we have any idea what that might be, the amount wise?
Uh, see, the, it's prob, I mean, it's money that we've already got, probably taken out of debt services, probably fifteen thousand, which would obviously switch over to, into additional revenue for operations.
A move we approve that transfer.
Second.
The move by Steve, second by Wes. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Next, I recommend the approval, this is something that we've actually paid officials from Eventlink for quite some time now, but now we have to actually take that through the board to get that approved. So this is something that we have done. It's past practice. We're going to continue to do that. We just want to make sure that, I guess, our board knows and/or that you approve of us continuing to pay officials through the Eventlink site.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved by Austin, second by Kevin. Any discussion?
Is that a new law that they've put out or just one that?
State Department is cracking down, recommending, and they're requiring a board approved resolution to use it, and so.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Next, I'd like to recommend the approval of the ACA affordability contributions. As we're looking at the contributions that we make towards insurances, there were some, some gaps based on our, based on the increase in insurance and what we actually put towards that insurance, and so we just needed to make sure that that was corrected and/or that it was actually affordable based on their calculation. So, we're just asking to make that recommendation for the employees that it, how many employees? Four, five employees?
Very minimal. There's a calculation based on the poverty and a percentage in the number of hours you work. And the law says anybody that works over thirty hours a week, we have to offer affordable insurance to. Being a school year and schools being kind of abnormal from a normal work environment, a couple of our employees fell below that, and so we got to increase our contributions for just those employees.
What's the additional cost roughly?
It was, it was like seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars per person. The people that, currently, the people that we've got to increase their wave insurance anyways, so.
No actual cost, but we have.
Directly, zero cost, potential cost in the future possibly, but right now, none.
May we approve those changes?
Second.
Move by Steve, second by Kevin. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Next, I'd like to recommend the approval of the 2026, 2027 corporation calendar. Just a couple of notes, and I apologize, I was just made aware that that was not shared in color when shared, so that makes that a little bit easier, or more difficult to read. But the gist is, the calendar is very similar to in years past. It is just because of Memorial Day being later and/or just kind of the shift in the calendar, we actually, what will seem like we're starting a week later. So we will actually start with Teacher Day on the tenth, Students' First Day will be the twelfth. October Fall Break will remain a week. We will actually do parent-teacher conferences after Fall Break instead of leading into Fall Break. And so that will be a change. We will still have some of the delay days in there, but shifted around at more strategic times when it comes to the I-Learn checkpoints as advised by both building level leaders and/or the union. Obviously, Thanksgiving break will be the same, Christmas vacation will still be two weeks, just like it is right now. February fifteenth, which is President's Day, just like this year, will be a possible makeup day, but also that's where our professional development will take place instead of that first day back from New Year's. Spring break will stay the same week with the bookends of Friday and Monday, or at least my recommendation is that. And then something we've looked at and has been a growing trend is having graduation a lot sooner after our last day of school instead of waiting a full week. It gives administrators heartburn for what takes place from that last day of finals till that next Sunday. And it's, so it's just one of those things of while we have students on site, seniors already be there. In fact, their practices, once again, Mr. McCann can talk a little bit more specifically to that, will possibly be that Friday because typically they're done with their classes by then, and then we'll go ahead and have graduation that night. So we want to get the calendar out so as people make plans. But also keeping in mind that, that Memorial, that's Memorial Day weekend and all of that stuff. So just trying to get that going at the front end of Memorial Day versus the backside and/or waiting until June seventh to do that, so. So that would be my recommendation, and I will make sure you guys get a colored copy of that. I apologize for that.
Graduation for the class of twenty twenty seven, sounds weird, will be May the twenty eighth. Okay.
Correct.
Twenty seven.
Yeah, five, twenty eight, twenty seven. And the last day of school will be?
The twenty seventh.
The twenty seventh.
So, Jeremy, I noticed that.
As of right, as of right now.
Yeah, as of, I mean, that, that proposal can.
Cancellations, all of that stuff.
That we've kind of skewed in a number of days. I think I saw eighty-four to ninety-six. Is that going to cause any issues at senior high? With classes.
I'm sorry, I was looking at a calendar.
Yeah.
Question is, the skew of days, not necessarily having even, even semesters.
I mean, it's nice to keep them close. I mean, within, you know, a couple of days is nice, but sometimes that's hard to, especially.
It must not be the right day.
No, it's not. The twenty-eighth of May is a Friday. Are we going back to a Friday graduation?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That night.
That would be the recommendation.
Okay, that's how I graduated.
That would be the recommendation.
Okay, so we're not doing a Sunday afternoon as a Friday night?
You need to remind the board that week.
Yeah.
Because we'll be there Sunday.
And part of that, Mr. Boyer, was some of the conversation that we've had over the last couple of years of, I guess, just making it a little bit more accessible and/or a captive audience when it comes to our teachers attending that as well. I'm not saying that's the sole reason, obviously, that week in between helps people forget and go on vacation right away. But you would have a little bit more of a captive audience of people that would, would be attendance to that. And to your point, Mr. Stickter, you mentioned just the waiver days. If you recall, that waiver is good for the next three years. So once again, excuse me, this year, next year, and the year after, so next year would be year two. But that would come into play for some of those cancellations or makeup days that we would need to take. So that's a little bit more flexibility that's maybe not viewed here because we have to show what we know versus what we kind of have sitting in the background, so.
So for the board's reference, what time are we holding graduation?
I need to get that scheduled.
Yeah.
We're going to say seven o'clock. I don't know.
Is it here in time?
Yeah. We have not discussed that. We have a suggestion.
When you know, we'll need to put that on our calendar because some of us that aren't, no longer present has a hard time getting to graduation on time.
We will, we will talk more maybe.
I know, he won't be taking a nap then, yeah.
Is he here? He might be.
He's not, he's not here yet.
He's not here yet. So we'll talk more specifics on that. We'll get some details around that, but any discussions or any questions about that, be more than happy to take that.
Thank you. Alright. Do I have a motion to approve the calendar?
A move we approve the calendar, twenty-six, twenty-seven, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Steve, second by, do I hear Wes?
Yeah, I took it.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Next, I'd like to recommend the quote from Hoffman Outdoor Power Equipment to purchase a sixty-inch Toro mower to replace our aging mower. They gave us a very, very good price as just a member of our community and wanting to give back a little bit, obviously.
Motion to approve.
Is this a, I'm sorry?
He's just trying to approve it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, go ahead, I'm not.
Do you have questions? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll second it.
It's the move by, okay, Kevin, now ask your question.
So is our existing mower at end of life, or is this an upgrade, or what's the?
It.
I mean, we're getting a pretty good price for the trade-in. It must, it must be worth something to somebody.
Once again, I think if you would have taken the same mower, maybe not you, right, but if somebody else would have taken the same mower. I, I think they're, you know what, they, they love our corporation. I think they're trying to do us a favor. If you took a look at our mower, it is used well. So end of life, obviously, they feel like it still has a little bit of life in it because they're willing to do, give us a good trade-in, but.
Fix them up there.
Maybe it's collectible.
Right. They're giving us.
Well, I don't want to stand in the way of somebody doing us a favor.
Any other discussion?
The Toro, John here.
Yeah, he's, he tried several.
Dakota, or Kubota, and, you know, and got quotes from them and trade-in was not near that high.
Yeah, I, I did, I did look at all of those quotes and none of them were really significantly close to what Parkman was able to do for us, so.
So we appreciate their efforts.
Alright, any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes five oh.
Next, I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the Triton Elementary School PTO outdoor classroom submission that they spoke a little bit about tonight. So I asked Melissa to make sure that, excuse me, Mrs. LaShure. I asked Mrs. LaShure to make sure that she was part of those conversations and just, we always want to make sure that those, those don't become just another thing within the buildings or outside the buildings when it comes to maintenance and upkeep and those type of things. So that's something they have talked through. They feel like it's going to be a usable space, and we just hope that will be the case. But in the end, no money out of the corporation to go towards that. They've obviously done a great job fundraising.
Move we approve that classroom space at the elementary.
I'll second that.
The move by Steve, second by Wes. Any other discussion? And we thank the PTO for all the. And we thank the PTO for all the hard work they give. All in favor, motion passes five oh.
Next, I'd like to recommend the approval of the electronic signatures, this is new to our computer system. So typically, Tom would sign, or I would do the second signature on all documents through this system. There are checks and balances, so we were a little queasy about that to begin with, but after Tom got the explanation from the company, we feel a lot, a lot better about that. So we just want to make sure that the board knows that there will be some of those that will be, or not all documents, but through computer, that will be electronic signature.
More signing contract?
No more signing contracts.
Not, not auto pen.
But none of you.
Electronic signature.
None of you have a signature that's in cursive?
Make that clear.
Yeah.
None of you have a signature that's in cursive? Is that a thing of the past, is that?
No, I think it's just, do you want to accept the, the signature that they?
I see the.
Nobody writes in cursive anymore, Kevin.
I think maybe you're looking at the document on the board pack.
I don't think that's, I think that's who's doing it. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was going to say, I didn't know you were going to pick on this for our signature.
Yours is in cursive.
Yeah.
I guess I should.
Yours is.
Fifty, fifty.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
It's kind of like DocuSign, whatever they maybe give you.
Does that mean like Terry and I are going to have to sign something? Or have you?
Oh, it's in the pile. Okay.
They don't have to stay after the meeting where they have to sign a hundred pages in a row anymore. I bet you guys would be excited about that.
I'll move that we approve the electronic signatures.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Steve, or no, Kevin, second by Austin, any other discussion? All in favor, motion passes five oh.
Last but not least, I appreciate Orion, Kenny, and Andy, we've been in conversations over the last few weeks. Just putting a little structure, just felt the need to put a little bit of structure around Triton Trojan Sports Network as it relates to some of the ad revenue, and just making sure that there was more of a business plan and or an agreement with Triton School Corporation. In the end, that does reflect us, and not that they've ever reflected us in a negative manner, but in the end, so we can continue to collaborate on announcements, when things go out, and, and some of the things that we do moving forward. So I do have a statement that I will make and or that I will share with our, with public, just how that kind of came about, and I'll share that today, but I do want to make that recommendation approval that has been signed. The agreement is in the packet to be signed. Mrs. Barnhart, you're probably abstaining from that, that too, recuse, just because of the conflict of interest. But I would make the recommendation that we move forward with that network agreement.
I will move that we approve that agreement with Triton Trojan Sports Network.
Second.
The move by Steve, second by Wes, I'm retrusing myself, so all in favor, motion passes four, zero, one. On to superintendent's report.
All right, so as I just stated, this is kind of related to the TTSN, so here we go. We know the recent update from Triton Trojan Sports Network about moving to a pay-per-view model has brought a mix of reactions. Many understand the cost, time, and heart that goes into producing the broadcast of our community that our, that our community has enjoyed for many years, from the elementary programs all the way to varsity contests. Admittedly, the timing and communication leading to the rollout could have been more strategic. However, the product that we have come to enjoy is second to none. For thirteen years, Triton Trojan Sports Network has poured countless volunteer hours, talent, and personal resources into showcasing our Triton scholars and supporting our community. What many don't see is the behind-the-scenes work, the equipment upkeep, the repairs, the editing, the publishing, the managing content, coordinating schedules, and the travel involved, the gas, the meals, and time away from family. So far this year, Orion and the TTSN crew have covered more than a hundred and fifty events. Whether you're a snowbird in Florida or down south, a parent working second shift, a proud alum watching from another state, or a Trojan fan across the world, you know firsthand how exceptional their work is. Their commitment has always gone above and beyond, often for little to no more than a thank you, a T-shirt, and a hot dog from concessions. While this change may be surprising and certainly not easy, we hope that with a moment to reflect, many will see the value in supporting the people who have supported Triton for so long. Ten dollars a month to watch varsity contest helps ensure the sustainability of high-quality coverage that our students, families, and community have come to count on, while also supporting TTSN, Triton Athletics, and our scholar athletes. We appreciate your understanding, your feedback, and most of all, your continued support of the Triton scholars and TTSN team. Together, we can keep something truly special going. And just a couple of stats that I think are important. So since January two thousand twenty-five, the TTSN crew and or individuals have been to two hundred and twenty-five events. A hundred and twenty events since July first. Orion specifically has spent over two hundred and ten hours since July first and five hundred and thirteen hours since July first two thousand twenty-four, excuse me, from July first two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. And this only counts time broadcasted, recording events, not the website, social media, YouTube editing, YouTube moderation, and graphic design, and huddle editing. So a lot of time and effort goes in behind the scenes that we don't see. We see the awesome product, you know, when we're walking on a treadmill, we watch the game from the night before, or that type of thing. But in the end, these are, this is a lot of time, energy is going into that. And we just simply want to create a sustainable model that really allows us to compensate that team. So none of that money is coming to Triton School Corporation, but it is going back to TTSN, creating a, a pot of money essentially to go into the equipment that needs updated and, and so on. So, yeah, again, difficult, change is difficult, those type of things. But in the end, as I told the crew, it's really, really easy to back the product, right, which is second to none, so. Usually don't take questions during my report, but I'll be glad to take any if anybody has them.
Just, I mean, are there going to be instructions that go out officially on how to do this? Has that been out there already?
So that, that's, that was shared, that was shared earlier than, than expected, yes. That was shared early on, that can be re-sent out to people, but that was shared in the original message for people to, to go onto that. My understanding, Kenny, forgive me if I'm wrong, I think there's close to a hundred and forty.
The last I knew, I think that.
A hundred and thirty-five, a hundred and forty. Yeah, so there, there's a piece of that, and once again, these are all part of the discussions that have been had with TTSN, whether that's individually or collectively, is when you think about four hundred people watching a basketball game or a football game, that's four hundred people that didn't come to the game and pay to get into that game, right? And in the end, that's an amazing service, and we want to continue that amazing service. But when you think of some of the gates and some of the things and how that impacts the athletic program, I will be very clear that Mr. Eunice, our athletic director, has never once asked and or said, this is taking away from our gate. He has never said that, that was not the purpose of this. Really, it was to say, there's a lot of people that are spending a ton of time covering our athletes and making this a priority. We have, we have fifth graders and sixth graders that know they're going to go home each night. Some of you guys are sitting in this room as fifth graders, you know you're going to be able to go home and watch your game. That's just not normal, right? I think we take that for granted, and it takes somebody to be there to edit that, to publish it, and to make sure that that's out there. But in the end, we, we really feel like they deserve some of that compensation for that, so, yeah. But we will be more than happy to share that, it is out there, it is out there, but we can, we can reshare that in a, in a little bit, maybe clearer way. Evidence-based decision-making, I appreciate, appreciate everyone's patience last week, as we had a difficult weather week. I feel that we had a full scope of winter last week, everything from accumulation of snow early in the week to ice, to freeze fog, to really cold temperatures on Thursday and Friday. I did share out in some way, shape, or form just how we go about making cancellation and delay calls. We had some feedback on the call was too early, those type of things, well, we got, we got a, we got a call sometime, right? And there's a lot of people in the corporation, and we don't know when they're in bed or when they're not. But we try to do that for families, make sure they have plenty of notice. So I did share the how we make delays, I also shared with the middle table, I guess, but have shared that often, that that windshield chart has not changed, but when we get really, really cold temperatures, how do we go about? I just don't, I promise guys, I don't go out and, you know, right outside my door and see how it feels and, and make decisions, or calls from my son's friends about making cancellations, okay? So there really is a process about that, so they try to get the inside scoop, and I think they will probably tell you, very rarely do they get that. So anyways, shared leadership. Mr. Miller and his wife, I do not believe are here right now, they're probably going to enjoy us for some festivities afterwards. But this is a great time and shared leadership to thank Mr. Ken Miller for his ten-plus years on the Triton School Corporation Board of Trustees. We thank Mr. Miller for his dedicated service to our students, staff, and community. He has always been a trusted member of our board when holding people accountable. He was courageous, if a difficult conversation needed to be had, he was able to and willing to show empathy, share perspective, and respectfully hold the line or follow through with what he said he was going to do. We will greatly miss Ken, and we are so thankful of the time that he served and shared the leadership of our great institution. So I believe he's, him and his wife are going to join us for ice cream and cake afterwards as we celebrate a little Christmas together, but just a great guy who we've all had the opportunity to serve next to. Social responsibility and alignment, a couple of weeks ago, high school student Darren King, who I believe is in the house. All right, you got your name set, man, good job, glad you're here. And Timmy Zimmerman participated in the Indiana Bandmasters Association All District Honor Band for high school students at Plymouth High School. They were selected from over two hundred and fifty applicants in twenty-three schools, represent Triton, and perform with some of the best music students in the region. These students, the weekend of the event rehearsed all day Saturday and then put on a fantastic concert on Sunday. In addition, Timmy Zimmerman was selected to represent Triton at the Indiana Bandmasters Association All Region Honor Band for high school students at Penn High School. He was selected from two hundred and twenty-six applicants and also rehearsed all day Saturday and performed on Sunday afternoon. Congratulations to both of you, thank you for positively representing Triton. And you're, you're looking dapper tonight, as we put you on the spot. On Thursday, November twentieth, two band students, Dolan Berkeypile and Darren King, Triton alumni Brennan King and Karen Nelson performed with the Marshall County Church Orchestra on their Christmas concert at the Reese Theater in Plymouth. The orchestra put on a fantastic program, and Dolan Berkeypile conducted three of those pieces. On Friday, September, excuse me, November twenty-first, some Triton Junior Senior High School band students went to the elementary to perform for the fifth and sixth grade students and talked to them about band. All of that being said, I want to thank Becca Pollack, Candace Haynes, Megan Atkinson, and Leah Alderfer for their time and effort and commitment to making Triton Performing Arts a quality representation of our school. Accountability, I want to congratulate Ms. Stacy Sheets, she was honored and for the social worker of Triton, I guess counselor of Triton School Corporation Elementary, Elementary School as the two thousand twenty-five Hope Giver of the Year. She truly embodies what it means to be a Hope Giver, she supports students and families through their hardest moments with compassion and steady care. She partnered with Dustin's Place to bring grief groups to her, to our school and personally experienced their impact when Triton lost a staff member last year. Her heart for others brings hope to the school and beyond, so she was one of five candidates, I believe, and she was named or crowned the Hope Giver of the Year by Dustin's Place, and that was a few weeks back. High expectations, I want to congratulate Jaden Overmeyer for receiving one A All-State Team and First Team All-Conference. He was joined by First Team All-Conference teammates Colton Reynolds, Gage Riffle, Vinnie Prater, Isaac Quintana, some of the guys right in front of us here, congratulations to you guys. And then All-Conference Honorable Mention Maddox Denny and Preston Brookins. Our men and ladies wrestling teams are off to a great start, representing Triton School Corporation well. Our men's and women's varsity basketball teams had big wins over Plymouth a couple of weeks ago and continue to compete and give their best. Alignment, over the last few weeks, students from our CTE automotive programs were highlighted, internship spotlights were given, college commitments were recognized, a salute to our veterans at both schools were very well done. Thanksgiving activities to model what it looks like to thank others. Junior high and elementary incentive events, PTO highlight, highlighting teachers as we talked about tonight, hallway heroes. Incredible cheer blocks over the last couple of games, and the list of great things goes on, so great job, and I'm very, very proud of you guys. Evidence-based decision-making, last but not least, a heartfelt congratulations to Mrs. Sarah Arvison for taking full advantage of her opportunity to step in the gap, show her capabilities of engaging with students, parents, and students, and being the unanimous choice to be named Triton Junior Senior High School Assistant to the Principal. Sarah is a vital member of our staff and will continue to grow her impact as she seeks to continue to make a difference at Triton Junior Senior High School. Sorry, that was a long one. Lot of good stuff.
It's time for patrons' comments, anyone else have a comment? Go ahead.
Yes, regarding the weather, are those materials made available on the website, or where can we access those?
Yeah, I mean, I put them on our social media outlets, I could definitely put them on our, our website as well. I just don't know that there's maybe as much traffic on our website as there is our social media pages. But it may be something, to your point, maybe I send that out through school messenger, through emails, so that goes into every home except for just the ones that have social media and stuff like that, but yeah, I'll be glad to share those. There's no secret behind it, in the end, sometimes it's a really difficult call, right? But in the end, we do have a framework and a, a process in which we use, so I'll be glad to do that, that's a good.
Yeah, if anybody wants to see them, they're right here with us tonight.
But yeah, I shared them through social media, but maybe I needed to do that a little bit more personal through the email, so that's a good question.
Any other question?
You only get two, so go ahead.
You can have as many as you want.
You're not sure, Louie. Go ahead.
No, you're right.
Going to Assistant Principal, are you guys looking for another guidance counselor?
Yeah, so that's a really good question, I'll do my best to answer that, and then if Mr. McCann wants to piggyback on that and add a little bit to that. Obviously, we just went through a month and a half process, right, to find the right candidate to fill that position. That does leave the counselor position open. With the proximity of Mrs. Arvison in that office, right, and, and the capability of Mrs. Faulkner, likely we're going to, and thinking about what it looks like to post that position right now, would be difficult to find somebody that's saying, hey, two weeks before Christmas break, I want to start on January first at a different school. That's just, doesn't make a lot of sense. So in the end, those conversations still need to be had, and what I'm telling you isn't gospel, but in the end, likely what we're going to do is pause a little bit to say, what is the, the most need in that office, right? Is it another scheduling counselor, or is it something to the effect of like a mental health coun, you know, counselor? Or something of that nature? So really, this is the time right now to, to look at that and to say, how, what makes up our office? What is the best bang for our buck and the best, the best situation that we could have to support everybody, right? So that's a really good question. So I guess the short answer to that is likely we will not replace that immediately, okay? But in the end, really kind of get a game plan moving forward to say, what does that look like possibly starting next year? You bet, good question.
Any other question? You are not limited to two.
You are not.
Oh, go ahead.
Any other good questions?
Is her being moved this current school year, or is it waiting for next year?
Say that again?
Is her getting moved happening now or next year?
Her move actually took place about a month and a half ago. So double duty, right? When I say double duty is, is we've called it, okay, and it's an easy way to say, holy cow, we're maybe overloading people a little bit, but shared leadership, right? And so when Mr. Yarborough left, right, there's all, there's obviously a void immediately, right? And so in the end, Mr. McCann was tasked with what does our office look like right now? And how can we absorb some of these duties and continue some of the duties that were already on her plate as counselor? And so a lot of that, you've probably seen Mrs. Arvison more in the classrooms and in the hallways, maybe, maybe not. But in the end, she, a lot of those responsibilities had already been added to say, because in the end, Mrs. Arvison had a desire to say, you know what, I really want to know before I go spend a bunch of money on college, do I even want to do this, right? So this really afforded her, once again, as I call it, a dress rehearsal, to see, do I like this? Do I, do I feel like this is something, a passion that I want to continue to look forward to? Or is it something that like, I'll just go back to be a counselor, right? And there's no slam on just being a counselor, I'm just saying, there are definitely different duties that come along with that when it comes to the discipline and some of those things. Good question, good question.
Any others? No, okay, we will move on. No? Okay, we will move on.
All right, you already mentioned Veterans Day a little bit, but I did just want to do a shout out to our students because they did an incredible job, um, just honoring our veterans that came in and they showed a lot of respect. And I think just every single veteran that was there was just blown away by their behavior and, um, just thought they were wonderful. So shout out to them. We're really, really proud of them. Um, right now, we're in the middle of our middle of year assessment, so, um, some of that data coming in is pretty exciting to see. And we're gonna be meeting next week to look at that and then prepare, um, plans for second semester. Um, I did want to share this note that actually Mr. McIntyre shared with our staff. Um, just kind of, I think, shows how our year's gone so far. So he says, as we count down the final ten days of school before Christmas break, um, Melissa and I want to pause and celebrate the incredible work happening in our building. It's been an incredible first half of the year. And this, our staff continues to provide high-quality instruction, build meaningful relationships with students and their families and consistently demonstrates positivity and professionalism each day. And we are deeply grateful for how, um, the staff has accepted us as their leaders and for the work they do for our kids every single day. And so as we head into these final days before break, we're gonna finish strong by supporting one another and offering the kind of grace that makes our school such a special place. And so we just wanted to give a shout out to our staff because they have been incredible, but so have our, um, students and parents. Uh, it's been a really great start to the year. Um, we are very excited about the PTO's plans for the outdoor classroom. That's something we've been, um, saving up towards for a couple of years now. Um, so excited to actually be able to get that done. Um, like PTO said, we are hosting the Penguin Patch in the library this week and so students can bring their money in and shop. Um, they're shopping during their day that they have library and then they also get one day during their lunch recess time to shop as well. But it will also be open this Wednesday from five to seven in the cafeteria for, um, anybody to come in and shop. And then we have our second quarter incentive party for fourth to sixth grade students, um, on December eighteenth. And so thank you to the high school for letting us use their auditorium. We'll be showing a movie and having snacks as their incentive party. Does anyone have questions for me? A lot of little knickknacks. How about that? That's a nice way to put it. It's what little kids love to get. Okay, all right.
All right, for the junior senior high school, uh, first thing I want to highlight, so back on November twenty-fourth, I, I think I saw Liam back here. So Liam had the opportunity to visit AB, ABC fifty-seven. Um, I think somehow they saw one of our senior highlight posts that we make and the fact that he was, uh, interested in meteorology and accepted, uh, Oklahoma State, correct? Oklahoma, I apologize. I apologize. Um, so anyway, they invited him and he had the opportunity to go and, and, uh, see what it was all about and, uh, hopefully that was a really good experience. Um, November twenty-fifth, uh, we had manufacturing day, so our counselors took our sophomores to some of the local manufacturing plants in the Marshall County area. And that, we've, we've done that for quite a few years and that's always a really good experience for our kids just to see what is out there and available to them. On December fourth, we had a healthy relationships presentation for all of our students. So Kim Yoder came out and she's with, uh, Child and Parent Services. Um, not very fun topics for, for those of you that were there, um, but important topics. Um, a lot about child abuse and, and how that might look and it's just, uh, better protect our, our students and, and make them aware of the, the pitfalls and dangers that are out there. So appreciate Kim and the message she brought to us. Uh, December sixth, Rhythmic Revolution, our swing choir group, they performed at the Etne Green Lions Club. Uh, let's see here, today we had, uh, some of our junior high students, uh, they attended the Junior Achievement with Mr. Grindel over in Fort Wayne, just to learn about budgeting, managing money, those types of things. Uh, tonight, we had our band choir, swing choir, um, they're performing, performing their winter concert. Uh, let's see here, December tenth, Bye County Basketball Drawl over at Laville, so that's always a, a fun time in January. So we're gonna, we're gonna make that drawl here in the next couple of days. Um, junior high language arts math teachers, uh, they have been working a lot during our SLCRR homeroom time. So those students are, they just finished checkpoint one for ILEARN. They get an opportunity to go back based on that data and reteach some areas of that in the hopes that when they take opportunity to, to show growth and, and improve in that. So our teachers have been working really hard and using that time to work on skills and, and the standards that our kids maybe did not perform well on and, uh, look forward to seeing how that data improved. Uh, let's see here, hard to believe this, but December eighteenth and nineteenth, uh, we have final exams. So next week, guys, we have final exams, so get ready for it. Um, and then for our junior high, they get to have a holly jolly volleyball tournament. So some of our junior high teachers are, are trying to break their day up a little bit. A lot of them do not have final exams. Um, so to spend ninety minutes or so in a classroom, um, and trying to keep those kids engaged, good luck. So we're trying to put something fun together for junior high, sorry, high school kids. Um, other than that, graduation questions. I know, uh, Mr. Riffle kind of presented that, but if you guys have any questions, happy to try and answer those. Um, obviously, some things still need to be worked out with the staff, just what that might look like at the end of the year, when things are gonna be due, what the seniors' schedule looks like, that last week, when we have practice, all of those types of things. So, um, we do, we do still have some decisions to make, but happy to try and answer those when you have those questions. And then, uh, the last thing for me is I, I want to congratulate Mrs. Arvason as well on, uh, becoming the new Assistant Principal at, at Triton. Um, she's done a great job through her, this stint as interim, uh, Assistant Principal. Um, she interviewed amazing, uh, she did a really good job in the interviews. Um, it was unanimous around the staff committee, um, table that she was the best fit for the job and she was the right person to go with. So, um, we had a staff committee of seven. We had a student committee that helped out as well of three students. Um, hopefully that was a good experience for them and, uh, they learned a little bit through the process as well. Um, but I look forward to working with Sarah. She's, um, got a lot of really good ideas. She's got a lot of energy. I think she might need to tone it down a bit. Um, they're getting me to do a lot of things this time of year that I'm not loving, but I'm trying to be a good sport. So anyway, congratulations. Look forward to working with you. That's all I've got unless you guys have questions.
If there's no other business, we will move to adjourn at seven fifty-three. Thank you all.